Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the Budget Committee to order at 6:33 PM. This is the Budget Committee meeting of the Nashua Board of Education. We are at Nashua High, Nashua High North Boardroom. And it's Wednesday, January 30th. So I'm going to take the roll. Mrs. Oden?
Here.
I forget the order, so I'm gonna be winging it.
Over.
Who was second?
Me, I'm here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here. Kaufman's third.
Mr. Kaufman?
I just said I was, I called my name and I said I was here and I was third.
Okay.
I was trying to help you.
Mr. Kaufman. Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
And Ms. Porter?
Here.
Okay. I believe I got everyone.
Nobody called me.
And I missed Ms. Hohensie, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay. Hohensie. Okay.
Ms. Hohensie, do you remember what order you are in the roll call?
I'm right after Ray. I'm probably in the middle of the pack.
Okay, and I think Ms. Van Twyver was before me. But I'll be winging it. Okay.
There really aren't many votes during the presentation. I don't think it's gonna matter.
Right. Okay. So our, what we have on the agenda is the budget overview. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Mosley.
Sure. So we're gonna start, start with the preliminary budget for 2020. And we're gonna do a tag-team approach to this. So I'll start off the presentation and Dan's gonna talk a little bit about the, kind of, the fixed costs. And then I'll talk a little bit about personnel and items that I would say are familiar to you and some of them that are due to this process. Dan, is there anything you want to add before I go? All right. So if you, this is the superintendent's budget, the first preliminary one that's being proposed to the BOE for FY '20. Got it, Dan? All right. So the genesis of this budget really rests on a couple of what I would say tenets. We didn't want to list all of them, but we wanted to list the ones that were poignant and relevant in terms of this discussion. Again, attract and retain our educators. We want to make sure that people understand that the goal is to have longevity here and to be with us until their retirement. There is no question that our ELL students in our district are in need of more attention in terms of services and personnel, and that budget reflects that. This is not new, as this was proposed in our last budget. The second point, no reductions in staff. That is going out to all of our teachers who are watching this and understanding that you don't have to be worried about your position, your current position that you're in. Full-day kindergarten is something that has been the topic prior to my arrival and continued. There was some paraprofessionals that were lacking from the inception of the program. And this budget attempts to bring equity in the district in terms of paraprofessionals that are in our full-day kindergarten program. Our correction of cost of out-of-district budget shortfall, this is something that has, what I would say, been the Achilles' heel for our district as our out-of-district costs have continued to rise over the course of several years. It's no one's fault, per se, because we can't control how many kids are being identified and coming into our district and also needing certain services that we can and sometimes cannot offer within the district. But understand that it's our responsibility as a public school that we have to educate all students. And we do have some budgetary remedies for that, but we also, in this budget, are going to propose some long-term solutions to this concern that has come up in terms of our out-of-district costs.
Okay, so I'll take over for a bit here and run you through a bunch of the numbers. Typically, I start this budget, there's a lot of confusion sometimes about what the actual budget for the school district is. The budget that the Board of Ed approves, last year, the number was $109,354,590. That's a significant, that's a significant portion of the operating budget, not all of the operating budget. Okay. In each year, the city prepares this book, this green book, that has all the budgets in it. They'll go through, they'll have a public hearing, et cetera. The number in this budget book is the number at the bottom, $146,672. So basically, what I try to show you here is, the board approves the 109 piece, which includes salaries and most of the other costs. The FICA, the benefits, the pension, that was $37.7 million last year. That is in the green book. It's not in the budget that this board approves. And then the city also goes through, and depending on where the, we'll put reserves aside for contracts. This year, that number's a little bit lower because we have a lot of contracts in place. So if there's a contract in place, those salaries will be put into the $109 million dollar number. If we don't have a contract, then sometimes we'll put reserves. The city pulls it out of the green book. So if someone wanted to do the math, this is how you get from the $109,354 to the $146.
Excuse me, are we gonna, should we wait till? Should we wait until later to ask questions?
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we, why don't we do that? Okay? Let him go through his presentation, then afterwards you can ask the question.
Well, the only thing is, if we have a question here and he's using this to base to explain something.
We'll come back to it. We'll come back to it.
Okay. So the budget that is being presented tonight is a total of $112,546,590. And as you can see, we got it so that the increase is exactly $3,192,000. And that's a 2.92% increase. So the budget that we're moving forward to the board is a 2.92% increase over last Okay. Typically, when I go through the budget, I break it into two pieces. There's the salary piece, which is typically about 80% of the budget, and then there's the items that are non-salary items. So this year, the increase in the salary budget from the budget, the 19 to the 20 proposed budget is $1,688,000. So that's a 1.95% increase. So all, that's all the salary line items together. So we talked before, it was a 2.92% total. Of that amount, that 3.192 increase, 53% of it is going to salaries and 47% is going to non-salary items. Here are, here's a breakdown of the salary items, sort of in a summary format. There's probably about 15 accounts that make up these. So obviously, the largest item is all of the wages. So it's part-time wages, it's full-time wages, it's, and any allowances for salary increases. So you can see that of the increase in salaries in this budget of 1.688 million, 93% or $1,565 of it is basically wages. Not surprising, really. That's where most of the increase comes from. The other items that have some changes, the wages per diem is $1,500 more. That's pretty much the substitute line. Severance is $40,000 higher than last year, but in reality, if you recall, last year, we needed to reduce our budget. The budget we sent over to the city was reduced by about $970,000. So we had to reduce the budget that we sent over. In doing that, I reduced the severance line from $800,000 to $760,000. So this year, I simply put it back to $800,000. I would say that $40,000 reduction was something I didn't particularly want to do, but we had, we had to cut it somewhere. So in reality, had I, the original budget did have $800,000 in it for severance. Overtime is $22,000 less. Basically, mostly what that is, is two line items. In reviewing the budget, we noticed there were a couple of overtime line items that hadn't been used much. Let's say, for example, they were budgeted at $15,000 and for the last three years, they hadn't charged more than $5,000. So we just went through and said, we're gonna take those out. So that's what I'd call just sort of reviewing the budget. If you haven't spent it in three years in a row, probably shouldn't have it in there any longer. So that's why there's a reduction in the overtime line. And then the all-other accounts, you notice the star at the bottom, that's all the other payroll-type accounts, longevity, additional hours, stipends, attrition. That's all in, that nets to an increase of about $100,000. And most of that, it's either stipends, about $30,000 of that is stipends. And the stipends isn't, it's different in that account, but in reality, it's just moving money within the curriculum budget. So the curriculum budget isn't really up that much, but they moved money within line items. So they just took that money, they had it in one place last year, they budgeted it in a different place this year. And the other part of the increase, most of it is summer school. There's probably about a $50,000 increase in summer school as we stand now. And I'll talk more about summer school later. Okay. This is the non-labor piece of the budget. So these are all the costs that aren't related to payment of wages or those types of things. And typically, like I said, it's typically 80/20. This year, it's 79/21. So the increase in this budget is 6.57% or 1.503, $1,503,988. So the percentage is high, it's a 6.57, but keep in mind, that's only 20% of the total budget. So of the $3 million increase, 53% of it is in wages and 47% of it is in non-wages. Okay. Now, in your book, the next few slides, in your book is a two, I call it the two-page budget, the commodity budget. This is the budget in a simple format by account, okay? So these next few slides, if you were to look at this two-page, you might say, wow, why is this account high? Why is this account low? So these next few slides will try to explain that to you. It should be in the, the, the beginning of where all the reports are in the back, if you wanted to look at the two-page thing. It should be the first one in there.
Right.
Okay. So we'll talk about some of the increases there, because sometimes when people are reviewing budgets, they go specifically to this two-pager because it's easy to read and they'll say, geez, that account went way up. So we'll, we'll talk about why some of these things went up. Okay. The first thing is transportation. As you know, we have a contract with First Student. That goes up every year. This is a 3% increase in the transportation budget. So even though the percent isn't that high, the dollars turn out to be, since the transportation is a fairly significant line item on our budget. Next one, out-of-district tuition. Superintendent mentioned that before. Anyone that's listened to me in the last three years at Finance and Ops knows, we have been severely under-budgeted in this line item for the last three years. I have a sheet here, which I'll put in your budget books next week, which basically sort of gives you for the last seven years, what our budget has been for this line item and what our actuals have been. We have been under-budgeted the last three years over $1 million per year. So this is just, we can't continue to put a budget out there that just, it's false. You know, you can't say we're spending $5 million when you're spending $6 million. So we have, it's, it's a big number, it's in this budget, but I think it's important, this will, in my, in my opinion, will sort of fix the budget. Every single year, the last three years, I got down to the last minute trying to balance the budget. This past year, I actually had to use some reserves to balance the budget. You just, you know, can't do that. You can't continually do that. So like I said, I'll share this, it'll be in the next time you can see how we sort of manage that line. Computer equipment, and I'll talk about the next two together, computer equipment and computer software. Most of that is increases from IT. Rick Farronkoff will be here in one of the next couple of weeks, and he can get into more detail of exactly what it is. But simply put, there's a new core switch that he says we need. This core switch is sort of the backbone of our whole network. If this were to go down, then we probably wouldn't have phones, we wouldn't have a network. That switch itself is, I believe, 16 years old. So Rick can certainly explain more about that, but I think the cost of that is about $228,000 alone for the switch and the software associated with it. And the other piece, the other increase that you're gonna see in his budget, he's got this controller, wireless LAN controller. And I think I'll leave the explanation of that up to him, but those are two big numbers in this year's budget. The next item is plan ops supplies. Now, for simplicity's sake, we put the increase all into the janitorial supply line. So if you see that line, you'll see the increase of $50,000. In reality, if that amount is approved, we will spread that amongst all the various supply lines. Plan ops hasn't had an increase in supplies, supply lines in the last five years. As you know, costs are going up, electrical supplies, plumbing supplies, all that stuff is going up. So this was an opportunity to give plan ops enough money so that they can handle buying the same amount of supplies, basically, but just costs going up. Okay. Building and grounds maintenance, this is really two items. The $70,000 increase is two items. $50,000 is, the plan ops budget is basically $100,000 higher than last year. $50,000, I just mentioned in supplies. This, this other $50,000, we put in this line item, but it's to cover equipment and a number of things like that. So we'll give you the detail of the exact items, but for now, we put it all in one line. Because if, for some reason, the 50 gets knocked down to 40 or 30 or something like that, the paperwork to change it all around, multiple counts, would be a lot more work. So this is, this is a simple way of doing it. And the other $20,000, Dr. Mosley will be speaking to a middle school program later, and that's $20,000 related to renovations, if we're gonna go forward with this program. Okay. The other contracted service line, last year, it's for the past two years, actually, we've had this counselor working at the two high schools. That person spends half their time at North, half their time at South. We've been taking the cost of that from their supply lines the last two years. We had it in the budget last year, we couldn't keep it there, we had to make the adjustment in June. But I promised, and I'm probably couldn't promise, but I did promise the two high school principals that we would put it back in the budget where it should be. This is sort of another, it's, it's not quite the $800,000, but it's really something that should be put in there. So that's, that's what that item is. Medical supplies, the increase there is, as you know, we've been doing a lot of safety training. And basically, there's two levels of safety training, and the second level of the safety training is sort of a triage kind of thing. And there's supplies and tourniquets and things like that. So this is, this is a line item we're putting in, the $21,000, which will buy supplies so that all the schools will have the supplies necessary in the unfortunate incident that something like that would actually occur. So it's sort of, you know, we're, we're training people how to do things, and then we're not gonna provide them with the supplies. This is to say, okay, we're gonna sort of put our money where our mouth is. Next line, program improvement services. This is an increase of $20,000, but as I said before, this is sort of a curriculum budget line. They simply moved money within their budget to this line item. So it's not a true increase in the total budget, but it is increase in that line item itself. And then rentals, it's an $11,000 increase. About $7,000 of that is the Brentwood lease. As you know, we have a three-year lease there. It's increased by $7,000 from the first year. And the other $3,000 is from the athletics accounts, and I think it's related to the, either the pool or the skiing, there's a couple of the rentals for some of the sports went up a bit. So that's, that's what that increase is. Okay. And then the significant line item reductions. Personally, I'd like to have more reductions instead of increases, but we have fewer reductions and more increases every year. The contracted services line, this is really just an IT, change in the IT budget. So even though the line item is down $90,000, as you saw before, the increase in the equipment lines are up. So it was just moved around within the, within the IT budget. Books, same sort of thing. Most, most of the budget for books comes out of the curriculum budget. The curriculum budget had more money in the budget for books last year than they do this year, so most of that $30,000 is from curriculum. And the furniture and fixtures, that is also a curriculum budget line. They had a, the biggest change, they had a significant amount in furniture and fixtures last year, they don't have anything in that line item this year. So most of these are not necessarily decreases in the budget, but they're decreases in those specific line items. Okay. So now we'll talk about some of the, some of the items that are either new or added to the budget one way or another. The first one is, as we've mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, the out-of-district tuition. That's the biggest new item in the budget. It would be great if we could get that much in the budget, because I think it would solve a lot of our budget woes as we move forward. As I mentioned before, the transportation increase, that's, we're not getting any more service, we're not getting any more buses, it's just gonna cost us that much more, $223,000 more to run the buses next year. The two plan operations pieces that I discussed earlier, the equipment and the supplies, that's basically a $100,000 increase in the plan ops budget. And as I said, when plan ops comes, he'll break those down into more detailed items. Summer school programs. We're looking at, there's still a number of meetings ahead in the next probably four to six weeks when we're talking about our various summer school programs. We made some changes last year. For you call, if you recall, we worked with the Y and we put the Power Scholars Program in. We're thinking of trying to make that program slightly bigger this year. The interesting thing with summer school budgeting, you get, you get funds from the operating budget that we're discussing here now, and then sometimes there's grants, sometimes the Y gets, brings some more money to the program with grants they get. We don't have all the information on all the grants yet. So this number, we may not need this, we may end up being able to take this out later, but it's sort of a placeholder to say, if we want to run these programs and the grant money does not show up, then we, we may need this amount. But we'll, I'll, I'll give you a more detailed review on the summer programs after we've had the meetings, so maybe towards the end of the, of the budget process. And then that, the high school counselor that I mentioned before. So of the items we're sort of adding to the budget, so to speak, that weren't in last year, $1,193,000 are really just keeping the same levels of service. So that is that. Okay. Costs shifting to the operating budget. Each year, occasionally, we'll have items that were, were funded by some other source. The 21st Century Program, we've had for a number of years now. And basically, that funding, the funding for that program was mostly done by a grant. And in the be, probably the first seven or eight years of it, it was totally funded by the grant. The grant over time has been reduced, but during the time the grant was, was at a high level, the tuition that was coming in was being put into a special revenue fund. Okay? And there was also some other funds being put in there related to some Title I tutoring. So there was some revenue being built up in a special revenue fund. At, I think about four years ago, we, the budget for the 21st Century number went down a bit, so we took the director's salary and put that into the special revenue fund. So the special revenue fund for the last four years have been paying for the, she's actually not, I have a director, I don't think that's her actual title, but.
She's, she's a coordinator.
Coordinator, yes. So the person that runs the 21st Century Program. That, a special revenue fund is sort of like a small business, so to speak. You get revenue, you have costs. If you make money, you get to keep it in the account. It's not like the operating budget where you, you lose it, so to speak. You get to keep it and roll it over. At the end of this year, that account is pretty much gonna be down close to zero. So that account cannot continue to pay for the cost of the 21st Century Coordinator. So what I'm suggesting is we move the 21st Century Coordinator into the operating budget that will take, that special revenue fund can then slowly but surely start to gain momentum, build up some more funds, and then maybe be used again. But for the next two to three years at least, those costs, the cost for the coordinator need to be moved to the operating budget or to some other place, but.
Okay. So this is the additional resources that we're adding to the budget. And some of these items are new and some of them are not, are familiar to you. I'd like to start off by, with a, making the position of Communications Director full-time. And I just want to take a moment to talk about the why behind it and the rationale. This district is going to be embarking on a significant middle school project, a project that's gonna cost millions of dollars. And the flow of communication of where this project's going to be, how much money's going to be spent, the process of all of this, the fluid communication must, is a must and essential. The second piece, this is my second year here, and the communication that this district is able to generate with a .5 is not adequate. It's not adequate because it's, this district runs five days a week and sometimes seven days a week, and the communication, we do not get out to our public, even, I'd say, our communication externally and internally is lacking significantly. And so there are gaps in our communication in terms of what's being available for our district. There are a number of projects that are going on in our, in our district that are public and even our teachers do not know about. And certainly, when we start to embark on a construction project that's millions of dollars that people need to know about, that, that's both externally and internally, there needs to be a better line of communication from the district to the public and even internally. The Assistant Director of Human Resources is something that we proposed last year. Currently, it's just one person who is a director. The Human Resource Department is significantly understaffed. One or two incidences where there needs to be an investigation takes our director out of her role of supervising the department, and things in the, in the flow of the, of the department slows down at times. I'm not gonna sit here and say that the spaced-up the Human Resources Department is, is in is adequate, but certainly the staffing of what this department really needs, needs to improve. The other thing is that, I've always said this, is that, and I want to, you know, coin a phrase from Dan Donovan, we don't want to create too many superheroes in this district. And I mean that, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way, and I do consider Dan a superhero. And superheroes are people that. And superheroes are people that know all of the information. They, they know where everything is, they know how to do things. But the problem with superheroes is that when they leave or retire, who picks it up? And so, we need to, whether it's, whether it's Dan leaving or anyone, we need to make sure that if someone is out, or someone decides to transition or retire or anything, that the district and the function of that department continues to function and be vital and effective within the public schools. The second thing is, the third, the fourth thing down here is our paraeducators for kindergarten. I'm not gonna spend too much time on that, but we certainly understand from our last budget, we actually proposed those para-professionals with our kindergarten classrooms. The last year, we proposed a grant writer. I think we were, I think we were at like a $50,000. This year, we did, we increased it about 70, $70,000. Again, I believe that this district is not doing its due diligence when we don't have a position this way. $70,000 for a grant writer that can sometimes, in some cases, bring in over a million dollars is worth the investment. If you have the right person, you have the right, we are primed for a lot of different things out there that are, that are available for our grants. I know Dr. McKinney went after a $2,000 grant here recently. There's been a couple of coordinators and directors who are going after, you know, 500, $300 grants here and there. There needs to be someone in our district who's solely devoted to going after and securing grants. And I know that $70,000 will pay for itself. System administrative for part-time to full-time, this is a position that is over at Elm Street. When this position was first proposed, the person that, this is a technology position, please keep in mind that Elm Street is our largest middle school within the district, has approximately 1,100 students there. The person who held that position a couple of years ago preferred to work on a teacher's schedule, which is a little less than what the, what the position requires. Over the last couple of years, we've found it to be very, very difficult to secure and retain someone based on that current salary and hours of that position. So, considering Elm Street, again, is our largest elementary school, again, considering Elm Street is either gonna be renovated, or, or we're going to do a new construction project for Elm Street, this is definitely an important position in terms of technology, education, in terms of integration of technology, and certainly, we want to make sure we get the right person that has the right qualifications to work in that capacity. Teacher for the deaf, you will hear more about that for, from, excuse me, Marsha Bagley, our Director of, of Special Education. By providing an additional teacher of the deaf at the elementary level will result in the district's ability to meet the levels of service as dictated, as dictated in students' IEPs. And really, we'll, we'll, again, getting back to that out-of-district piece, certainly would help start to make sure that our students are not placed out of district as a result of not having this person. And certainly, in some cases, because we would be one of few districts that can actually offer this service, there's a potential, a potential to accept students from other districts to come in to defray. It's not gonna significantly, it's not gonna significantly impact the budget, but certainly, if we have a program here, other districts will send their kids to our, to our district to take advantage of our services and our resources to service the deaf students. Para-professionals for our behavioral program. Part of what has happened is our para-professional in our behavioral programs have tried a great amount of support to students and staff. You've heard it, it was actually at the last board meeting. We've heard about the behaviors, we've heard about some things that have been going on. And it will allow for more students' success in the general classroom, reduce the number of referrals to specialized program. This position will help provide the national staff with the training and skills needed to meet the needs of our students who are experienced, who are experiencing social, emotional challenges. And again, Marsha Bagley will talk more about that when she is here in front of you, presenting her portion of the special education budget. The interpreter ties into our teachers of the deaf. Anytime that we can homegrown things or program and make that investment in human capital, it allows us to keep our students in their home district. And it prevents us from, again, going back to that $800,000 that Dan talked about, sending our students out of district to get the services that we can offer in the district. Our Brentwood program, it's essential that, not only do we staff our Brentwood programs with our teachers and para-professionals and also resources, but we always want to make sure what I call the little things are taken care of as well. They're asking for a nominal increase in the secretary's support, so that there's a secretary there to greet the students and a secretary or someone there when they transition home. That's the other thing is our bilingual communication specialists. I want to talk a little bit about this, and this is something that's new, but also, I believe is essential for our district. That's, and the reality is, and I want us all to think about our, how we treat our ELL parents, how we treat and communicate and respect our, our families who are non-English speakers or, or challenging in terms of communicating with us in English. I'm embarrassed to tell you that there's just one employee at central office that can communicate with our, with our, our, our families that speaks solely Spanish. I'm, I find that to be appalling in some ways, and I feel like we're vulnerable. Each time we send out communication to our, all of our families, it usually goes out, majority of the time, it goes out in English. And I don't think that's right. I think that it should go out in multiple languages. And again, it talks, and I want to get back to the communication piece. All, all of our families should be receiving information from this district in a way that they can come out and support us. I think this became more prevalent and, and solidified, in my mind, the essential pieces to this, because when I was doing the strategic planning, we did have families that came out, but there are also families that came out that said, well, we don't know what's going on in this school. How can we get involved? And one of the families in our steering committee actually pointed out to me, she said something in Spanish that I can't remember, but it really spoke volumes to me that she said, like, her, her mother didn't speak English, but also really wanted to get involved. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm doing justice to that, but who knows what I mean. I believe that having one person at central office, being able to speak another lang, other languages, puts this district in a very bad situation. I believe that this district, it's incumbent on this district to reach out to all families, to make sure that all families are engaged. And even if I'm talking about communicating to families, there's also families that, when I call a snow day, sometimes they call the central office, speaking Spanish, asking for clarification. And out of the goodness of our heart, there's a secretary who actually stays later, or she'll be, she's around, to make sure that that communication is addressed, communicated back. And I think that we can improve on that, and it's incumbent on us to do so. The second piece to this is that communication works two ways, and when we start to build our middle schools, we're talking about the, the challenges and the opportunities to enhance our relationship with the community, even as we start to put forth this 2.92 budget, we need to make sure that we do a good job communicating with all of our families. The other thing that I think is important is our school psychologist interns. This is an opportunity that if we can't get the school psychologists in terms of cost, like what is the most cost-effective ways that we can be creative to get some services for all of our kids? Increase in the current school psychologist interns from one to three will allow for the district to effectively meet the ever-growing needs of our students with the least restrictive environment, resulting in fewer referrals to specialized programs and out-of-district placements. Again, we've heard about behavior, we've heard about the social-emotional pieces, we've heard from our teachers and even our administrators, that our kids need some support. And this is one way, just of many, that we're trying to make sure that we can address their needs. Oh, well, didn't I say ELL teachers we've already talked about? Okay, yeah, okay. I'll, I'll jump up to ELL, okay. Dan said I missed ELL, but I thought we've talked about that. I'm gonna say that there are, we proposed four ELL teachers. And I would like to say that this isn't the end game here. When we talked to Bach Choppa, we talked to teachers, they said, listen, you know, we could, we could use 10. And I said, I understand that, but part of it is, we can't get 10 in this budget. So what I'm proposing is that we phase in our need for our ELL teachers. And this is the, what I would call Phase 1, but there's certainly, please do not be surprised or befuddled or bemused in any way when we come back the next couple of years and we keep asking for ELL teachers. ELL kids in this district, I'm not blaming anyone at the table here or anything like that, but ELL kids, in my opinion, have been neglected too long, and they need and require us to pay attention to that. And that's, ELL ties into what I call the communication pieces. It's not incumbent for those families and those kids to meet us halfway. We have to build a better bridge to meet them halfway. And I believe that this, the communication specialist, I want to be very clear and out there, this person needs to be fluent bilingual so that we can engage and, and get these kids, our kids, to the services and the supports they need, but also, our ELL teachers, we need them. We need them because our kids need them. So this is what I call Phase 1 of our ELL phasing in for our, our kids. Thank you, Dan. Okay, so, I don't have a, an official name with this, and I want to give a lot of credit to Donna. There's administrators and teachers. Over the last couple of week, of months, we have been meeting with teachers at the middle school. And I will bring back some data around discipline and challenges. What I would like to say, if I can just take a step back, and I said this on Monday, that I believe our challenges with, with behavior and, and things that are going on at our, at all levels, but specifically at our elementary level, really starts with having one solid program around how to address students' social-emotional needs. One of the things that was in existence prior to my arrival, but was subsequently cut, was some form of an alternative or some type of social-emotional program for our kids at the middle school. It was in existence, but it was cut. Well, those kids that were cut, they didn't just go away, they were just put back in the classroom. When they were put back in the classroom, their behaviors, their challenges, their social-emotional needs didn't just go away, they're still there. So, what, again, starting small, and what Dan Donovan had in his previous slides is to slowly grow the program, that's gonna, we're looking at some, some spaces within our, within our middle schools to start a program very similar to the one that was in existence, except a little changes. Number one, I worked in special ed, and I never understood why you would have like two para-professionals, I'm sorry, two, two para-professionals and one teacher. And that just didn't make sense to me, because if that teacher's gone, then you're leaving two para-professionals, no offense to para-professionals, but they're not, they don't have the same level of training and background as a teacher to continue on with the classroom. So this, there is no easy solution to this, and I want to be clear, and I've talked extensively to the teachers, the union, some board members, and the principals, we can't do this cheap. We can't just decide we're gonna do one teacher, one para-professional, put, put them in a room, couple of desks, and say, go at it. If you want this program to succeed, you have to make investments in it. You have to make sure that the teachers have the right support, the para-professionals have the right support, and the kids have the right support as well. For this program, at the middle school level, we're proposing two teachers and one para-professional. Two educators to be with our kids and another para-professional, who's also can be considered an educator, but you understand that there are two people that can really, who are certified, who can teach the class, who can develop the curriculum and really move the classroom forward. The other piece is that we have to recognize that these kids need more than just instruction. They need a social worker, they need a counselor, they need someone, listen, they're gonna have a bad day. It's gonna be the day before Christmas, and they're gonna be off the wall. We have to understand that. And these are, are kids who are, and I want to be very clear, are not special ed. They're right on the brink of being referred. They're right on that, what I call that level. They are, if they continue on, they can be suspended on, they can be suspended almost every single day. When they get to the high school, they are those kids that can potentially drop out, be disenfranchised, and this is our way of trying, trying to really address that. The second piece to this, and we, and I, and I don't say this reluctantly, or, you know, in any perfunctory way, you know, we hear and listen to the teachers, and we understand the challenges that, that some of these kids present to our teachers. And so, this is our way of making sure that we can start that pathway to address those needs for our kids. There is a renovation cost to this, this, that's just an estimation, that's what Dan was referring to, but understand that this is an investment. Ultimately, these types of programs, the success, and we're not looking to enroll, you know, 50 kids in this, we don't want that. Ultimately, my goal, and if you said, you know, Dr. Moser, where, where would you like to see this program in 20 years? I'd love to see it phased out, because we did such a good job at our elementary schools, or maybe having one or two kids in there, I don't know. But this program by far, particularly at our middle school, is long overdue. It is not the same program. I believe it's a more robust, it's, it's supply, has more supports, but there's also some work that we need to do for this program. All right. So these are some things that I'm gonna just kind of talk a little bit about, and Dan can certainly jump in. We've continued to put in the budget, if it's, this is a board decision, but we just did it as a placeholder. If there was some interest or a stomach to join the New Hampshire School Board Association, that would be on the board responsibility. There was a high school substitute plan that we were looking to put together, that's still in the process of doing that, to make sure that we could try to build some incentives to attract substitute teachers to our, to our school district. I believe that we're, we're in the process of still developing that, but we wanted to make sure there was a placeholder for that. There's some software around T-Valve that we made some improvements on, that we need to make sure that, that we're budgeting for. Mr. Donovan talked about the, the tourniquet for our, our safety training that we've gone through district-wide. We want to make sure that we have enough supports for that. At our central office, we felt that there's important for us to do some security upgrades, particularly around some cameras and some, some, you know, safety equipment that we should be able to institute for about $6,800. Dan Donovan talked about the switches at the south. And finally, I, I, you know, there's this old saying, tell me the problem, but if you're gonna tell me the problem, you gotta come to the table with a solution. So, this last line is something that, believe it or not, I, we, I was talking with Marsha Bagley about, I was talking with Dan Donovan, talking with other special education directors, the, the former special education director about this line item. And here's the deal. Over the last three years, this district's out-of-district cost continues to go up. That's it. Next year, if you do not do anything, if this district has no response to it, it's going to continue to go up. There's got to be an end game to this. And so, what I'm proposing, and what I'd like us to do, is we hire or contract someone who can really start to have a discussion around a collaborative or some type of partnership with a other district. And, you know, I, I think that's long overdue for that. And part of that is, if those of you who are not familiar with a collaborative, a collaborative works as kind of a district run, out-of-district placement, and I want to be very, very clear, it doesn't mean like every single kid who is out of, every single student who's placed out of district is going to go to this collaborative. It could be some kids. For instance, if we had our own out-of-district placement or a collaborative that was supported by us in some other districts who would be willing to have that partnership, we could, and I'm just making up the number here, how, $6 million we're spending for out-of-district, because they're housed in our own district and we grow our own program, there's- there's an opportunity to reduce that to like 3 million. Instead of, instead of 3 million, instead of 6 million, it'd be 3 million one year. But part of, there's no easy solution to this. The out-of-district cost is going to keep rising unless you do something. We need to hire, or, and we need to hire someone who can start those discussions, start those discussions with other districts, start to look at our kids in terms of what we'd like to see for that collaborative, start to build those partnerships. And I want to be very, very clear to the board and to the public. This may be a, a significant investment now, but in 10 years, you are going to save money. If you decide not to do it, that's okay. But understand that your out-of-district costs are going to keep going up. And you're gonna be, my mother would say, you're chasing good money out, bad money after good money, or good money after bad money. I don't know what that, but you know what I'm saying, right? Okay. So you may think, this is $15,000. But understand, if you go back in that budget book, it's already up to $800,000 right now. If Dan and I are sitting down here next year, please don't be surprised if it's a 1 and not an 8, or a 9. And it's going to keep rising. Dan, did I miss anything? Did you wanna?
No, that's fine. Just a little highlight the high school substitute plan. Like Dr. Mosley said, that's a placeholder. One of the things we're looking at is sort of an elect, having it, a person, getting rid of substitutes at the high school level and putting in this other process. But if you think about it, as we've talked about it a bunch, it's, it's, it's not something that Dan Donovan can put in place. It's something that we need help from the teachers, we need help from the principals, et cetera. So my, I think we want to put it in the budget, we want to talk about it this year. My personal guess, it's gonna take more than the rest of this year to figure it out. But we'll bring some more information to the board regarding it, so we can live and learn. My guess is it will not happen as soon as next school year, but maybe in the following year. I mean, the substitute issue is a big issue, if you talk to the teachers. So if there was another way to deal with it at the high school level, this might be it, so. And this last slide is just summary of the different groupings that we just talked about, about the increasing costs at current levels of service, the costs that shift to the operating budget, the personnel, the additional personnel, and the additional non-personnel that we just went over. So in total, that's 2.493 of that $3 million increases are, are those items. And that is the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, and thank you, Mr. Donovan. What I'm gonna do is I'm going to go to Mr. Mosher first, to see if he has any comments or questions. It was a long, it was, it was a long presentation, but it was very interesting and covered a lot of bases. So, Mr. Mosher, if you'd like to have the floor?
Thank you. As I have some comments on what has been discussed, and I agree that we have to move on, on these, these things. And the idea of a collaborative, and, you know, there's some long-term thinking there. And this is what we have to do, and we have to not get tied up in, you know, just the, the short term all the time, which is what we've been doing for a long, quite a, quite a spell. And being, you know, we tried to be too reactive on, on the budget. You know, because we'd put together a, a budget in good, in good faith. And then, because we had to submit it to the rest of the city for the, not only the public hearings, but also the review by the alderman. And this is, this is too much short-term. And we have to start putting it in place in, in our plan. And I think maybe the strategic plan would have a, a good, you know, some good, good features there. That for long-term planning, and get into this collaborative, and see where we can, kind of, kind of, I don't know. I was thinking of spread the wealth a little bit, but that's not the, the term I want to use. But to get together with another district and do some collaboration, so that we can make some moves on the, on the special ed, and, and that, which is really the thing that kills us. Because we have to spend so much money on, on special ed, but hey, it's the law, we have to do it. So, I don't know. Right at this stage, I, I don't have any clear-cut thoughts in mind, but I agree with, with what has been said so far.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Van Twyver, can you still hear us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, would you like to have the floor?
I have a lot of trouble hearing particularly Mr. Mosher over the phone. What I do is I listen to the TV and put my phone on mute. But I do have a question on the summer school entry that was presented a few slides back. At the beginning of the year, I asked for the information about how, what the cost would be for each of the participants, the why Title I and whatever. Never got that information, so I'd like to know what the, I think it was $50,000 increase in that budget line? Is that because we're assuming the respa, the, uh, wise contribution to that program, or what? I'd like to know that. And the other thing is that when I had, get my book and do a few further studies, I'll probably have more questions. But that's the only one I have right now.
Okay. Would, Mr. Donovan would like to answer that? Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we have, we'll get you that next week. I'll get you the cost of the summer school for this past summer. And then, as I said, it probably won't be next week, but going forward, it's $20,000 that we put in to the budget, though there is, actually, there is another $20,000, I think, from special ed for the summer school. And we're gonna be meeting and talking about the various programs, because we have to see what's available for grants. But I will keep this board apprised as, as we meet on that over the next few weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Raymond, did you say you had some questions?
Oh yeah, I have a bunch. So, I, I, I'm sorry, did you say, and I missed-
Oh, I hope so, Mr. Donovan, I've been waiting for this information. Just because I haven't gotten it, it sounds like it's kind of hidden. But anyway, like I say, the way I'm doing business here is kind of difficult to hear what's going on when I'm not listening to the TV and I'm listening to the phone. So I will rest with that, and when I get my book, I will study it to make sure that I have all my questions answered. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Okay, thank you. Did you say what the cost per pupil was for the summer school program, or no? I was, I was, no, okay.
It would be different per program.
Oh, okay, got it. So I have a bunch, I made myself some stickies, I'm just gonna go through them. On page 11, you had, you had said that there's a decrease in the books, because curriculum had more money for books last year. But I feel like at our ed council meetings, I'm constantly hearing that our books are woefully out of date. So I'm just, maybe it's more of a comment, I'm interested in that.
Okay, yeah, I think when curriculum comes to speak, Mr. McKinney and Ms. Fitzpatrick can speak to-
That?
That, that line item.
All right, I will leave that posted there. And then, on the 21st Century Coordinator, I had just heard about the, I had made a little note to myself, what about the two-school expansion? Does that include the work that she would be doing to expand the program over the, with the proposal to expand the program? Or is that all grant-funded?
The, I, I haven't seen the grant, but I would guess that the additional two schools would be covered by the grant. Because we're not gonna add another leader, it would, she would just have more-
She would assume that responsibility?
More schools available, yes.
Okay. Lucky her. Okay. And then I had a comment on the grant writer, on page 14, $70,000 seems like a more appropriate salary that's more in line with just what the market bears for that particular job. So I just wanted to say that out loud. On page 14, again, the bilingual community, bilingual communication specialist. Are we looking for Spanish or a different language, or does it matter?
Preferably multilingual, multi-language. We have one employee who speaks both, very fluent in Spanish, and proficient in Portuguese. And also, again, was, it has been very helpful in terms of having, communicating to and from from central office. But we also have used her extensively for our survey recently, in terms of translation. So, yes, preferably, if I had my perfect candidate, as many languages as possible.
Okay, great.
But I just want to be clear, this is specifically for someone who is bilingual. You know, not someone like me who's monolingual, or can speak one language. So we, we really, really need that. And if this one person calls in sick, or, you know, leaves us in any capacity, we're in trouble. I mean, there's no one at central office to really do that job. And also, you know, communication is, is important.
No, I agree completely. I think we, I think we are not serving our ELL population the way that we opt to. For the, page 15, the middle school alternative program, I have two questions on that. The first one is how many students? And the second one is where are we thinking about locating it?
Good question. So the, the thought process is to start small, all right? So for me to give you a cap number, I'm not sure at this point, it'd be no more, I'd say 7 to 10-ish, ish, you know? The other piece to this is that we've looked at several ideas around the middle school, but we also want to make sure the spacing is appropriate. So we have some ideas, but also, we want to make sure that whatever school that decides to have this, that they have the right supports to do so. So that's still in process.
Has Brentwood been considered, or are they filled up?
So this is a little different than Brentwood, and part of, and part of the conversation that we've had with the teachers is that when the old program, I think it was called the Phoenix Program, when it was housed in a different location, it, it, the feeling that the kids had was that they were not necessarily connected to the school. And I understand Brentwood's a little different developmentally, because the Brentwood program is for high school kids.
Yep.
Whereas this program is still for like a sixth grader. So we want to house it in-house. And I think, speaking to the larger piece, and it wasn't mentioned earlier in this presentation, when we talk about the middle school's renovation endeavor that we're embarking in partnership with the city, that at some point, we need to have a deeper discussion around our special education programs in terms of the design of the building, because that could be effective too. But also, this program as well. So this program would be housing a middle school that, that they would, the kids would have a connection to. And, you know, that's where, that's where that would be.
That's it, that was all my questions. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have any questions, Mrs. Oden?
Thank you, Mr. Grino. The $800,000 increase for out-of-district, and I know that's absolutely necessary. Have we considered what increases per student we might be looking at for next year?
The $800,000 would get us, would not, probably not cover what our expected costs for next year would be, but it would get us closer. And we have a special revenue fund that could hopefully cover the delta. So, I mean, if I wanted to make, if, if my goal was to make the out-of-district line item conservative, I'd need like 1.2 million. But I figure that's kind of crazy. $800,000 will get us so that it is manageable, and it's, it may not be perfect, but it'll be manageable.
Do you have any idea when we will find out from, I know this one school, I believe it's the Lighthouse, that we have a number of students there. Do you have any idea when we will get an idea of what their increase for our students would be next year?
Yes, actually, was in on a phone call today with-
I'm sorry, don't be the laugh, go ahead.
With a number of people. Worst-case scenario, since we have about 18 or 19 students there, that could go up by itself, about $220,000 for those students. The hope is it won't be that high. But they gave us their reasons why they need all these increases. I won't opine on that at this point in time, but-
What'd you say?
I won't opine on that. I, I think they would like to turn themselves into a, I'll leave it alone.
That's a-
So we should find out, though, they go, they're going through a process with the state of Mass, and there's a board down there they have to deal with to get these increases approved. And they're working on that now, so we will know sometime later in the spring is my guess.
Can I just interject, and I think that, thank you, Ms. Oden, for bringing that up. With our, with our out-of-district costs, and I want the public to know this, and also the board, is that we are also at the mercy of the out-of-district program. So what Dan is alluding to, and it's a great question, and we didn't even mention that, is that our out-of-district costs for our current students can go up 2%, 5%, and sometimes 10%, coupled with our transportation costs. So we are, you know, we can have one set number right now, and Dan will be on another phone conference in two days with a discussion around what I would consider a significant increase in costs for our kids who are placed out-of-district. And so it goes back to, at some point, we gotta start to grow and, and develop our programs in-house. The second piece of this, we live in New Hampshire, right? And we're sending kids to Massachusetts. So we can do this in New Hampshire with the proper investment.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Mrs. Oden.
Okay, I don't want to. We have two psychologist interns at $28,000. Is that two of them for the full year, or is that four for each of those two?
No, that would be two for the full year. Currently, we have one for the full year.
Okay.
And this would be two more, so we would have three for the full year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grino.
Go ahead, Ms. Porter.
While we're talking about the intern, can you just explain to me what that, what that means, their interns?
Yeah, there's part of, to, to get their degrees, they have to do internships. So by offering a salary, even though it's a relatively small amount, we've been able to get very good, high-quality interns who can significantly help the, the other psychologists do a lot of the, I'm not sure if they do the grunt work or whatever, but they, they do a lot of work and help out at a relatively low fee. We've also had a hard time filling those positions. And we've had pretty good success in the people that we've hired into this position. They'll turn around, they'll stay with us, they'll become a full-time employee.
So do they work for the school year, a whole school?
Yeah, they work for the school year, exactly.
And they're full-time?
Pretty much full-time. I think it's, it might just, I don't think it's five days a week full-time, but it's three to four days a week full-time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So back to the first page. Mr. Donovan, you said that 109-354-590 was not the complete operating budget. Could you expand on that, please?
Well, that, that was the budget approved by this board, okay? But the true operating budget includes, that was this next slide. Right here, the, the full operating budget in the city book includes benefits, pension, FICA- FICA, that thirty-seven million dollars more. So, the operating budget for the school is the 109 plus the thirty-seven million.
Okay. But this, we don't mention the federal funds. There's another thirteen million or so in federal funds that we get.
Of grant funds, yes, that would be
Over and above.
Above that, exactly.
Okay. Could you maybe give us some percentages of these things in future slides, so we have an idea what the growth rates are and things like that?
What's that again?
In other words, provide some percentages increases to give us an idea of how, in some, a lot of places you did, but in some other areas, I mean, I'll calculate it when I get home, but it would just be helpful. For example, you're giving us changes in dollars on slide nine. It might be helpful to get percentage increases as well, is just, is what I'm saying, just.
Okay.
So, the transportation, you said that's, so that's a contractual 3% increase?
That is actually the, it's a 3% increase in the budget. We don't, the contract ends, so
Okay, that was sort of where I was going, because I recall that that contract had to be negotiated. So, you're just banking some money for an expected increase?
Exactly.
Okay. So, it's not the last year of the contract, and we have a 3% increase. It's an anticipation of what the
What the increase may
Negotiated contract might include.
Exactly.
Okay. I was curious about that. Thank you, Mr. Raymond, about your question about, and Mr. Donovan's answer about what would the real cost of the out-of-district be? Because I know, and I absolutely agree that we should invest in some kind of a, call it a collaborative regional program. I've spoken several, many times over the last three years. When I was on finance, when Mr. Hollibel was here, that was a theme, I think, he had before I ever came to the board and was always kind of poking at how can we address this? And I think if it's coming to the fore now, it's definitely worthwhile, a worthwhile conversation. Like I said not too long ago, we should be the destination. You know, and what can we do to, like when we were hiring, I don't remember now, capacity, we were talking about, oh, Brentwood was the example. Well, how many students do we have? What kind of capacity do we have in that facility? How can we recruit to capacity? And if the investment was another teacher or bringing them up to full-time, I would certainly support that. Brentwood is one example where we have capacity of space. But if I recall correctly, we have a little bit of capacity with the staffing, and a little bit more would get us to the staffing of the facility, if I remember. So, that might be a good place to start. I don't know if that makes any sense, but I appreciate the, now, the next question I have kind of deals with page nine. You mentioned the computer software and that backbone switch. So, are you mentioning that in two places? Or are you just mentioning it in one place and highlighting it that it's?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I
Know what I'm saying? It looks like it
It's not in two places.
Okay.
It's simply, it is, in the presentation, it's in two places. In the budget, it's just in one place.
Okay.
I was just trying to show you that if you were looking at that two-page budget, you'd see that it went up by this big number. So, but the core switch is in, just in once in the budget.
Okay, thank you. If I may continue? So, the books line caught my attention as well. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. In the past, I remember that number kind of hovering around 500,000. So, over the three years that I've been on the board, that number, well, at least the first year or two was around 500, and then it's kind of depleted itself a little bit. Now, I'm curious, and maybe when we, we get the curriculum folks here, we'll be able to dive down, but there's also a switch from textbooks to online content. So, I wonder, I think if the money is moving and the kids are getting the materials, that's fine. But if the money is moving and the kids are not getting the materials, then that's a real problem. Give me a second. So, on page thirteen, when you say 21st Century Director, that's actually a coordinator, not a director?
Exactly.
Because that's, because, well, they could have that kind of money as a director, but it's a coordinator position. And is this one of those positions that rolled out of Title I into the operating budget?
No, this has been either in the 21st Century Grant or in the Special Revenue Fund related to that over the last ten years or so.
So, the, the grant for 21st Century is independent of Title I? It's a separate grant?
Separate grant.
Does it have the same kind of provisions where they fund things for a couple of years, and if you want to continue, you have to pick it up? Is that how this position came about?
No, that, well, when you're mentioning that, that's sort of a Perkins Grant. They're very famous for doing that. 21st Century has reduced the amount over time, but they're not as specific about you can't keep a position in for more than three years. Like the Perkins, if you put it in, you can do it three years, then you get to cover it yourself. It's not quite the same with the 21st Century. But when they give you less money each year, you then have to either bring costs onto your operating budget or some other funding mechanism.
Okay. So, one of the things, when I look at these additional resources on fourteen and the way they continue, can we get a breakdown of classroom versus non-classroom? Because to me, in, if we're going to increase spending, I want to put it in the classroom. And I am less, the proposal that we have is over the mayor's recommendation, right?
It is.
And there's somewhere around 700, 735?
Seven thirty, yeah.
Seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference between what we've got on the table right now and what the mayor has said we can safely, I'll just say it that way, offer as a budget.
True.
So, for me, I'm interested in the classroom more than I am in support services. I'm sorry to say that, folks. Our primary purpose is to educate. We have our test scores, the proficiency scores are, need, have lots of room for improvement, I'll just say it that way, across the district. And for me, I'd rather see the investment in the classroom and ensuring that the kids that are not at grade level are at grade level, that we have the tier one, two, and three kids, right? So, we create those, right? So, we shouldn't have, well, we categorize them, and if they've been in the districts for some period of time, we have created a tier-three kid. And I would like to see the investment here going toward eliminating tier-three and tier-two, and really getting kids on grade level is the push. So, that's why my comment is targeted toward the classroom and academic support, because I see that as a real need. Now, this middle school alternative program, is there something, so Clearway is a high school program, right? Is there, I thought we had something for the, oh, that was in the elementary school, but not in the middle school that was similar to Clearway, but it was in-house?
I mean, we don't, this is for non-special education students, so this is something a little different. I don't think, we have programs in the middle school for the special education students, but I don't think we have the typicals.
These kids were receiving services before, or some type of program, and they were cut. And as a result of that, they have been thrown back into our mainstream classrooms without any support. And as a result, they are subject to our discipline. They have been suspended multiple times. The teachers have struggled with these kids, and they need them more. I, you, when you're saying, right, right, I'm saying, like, I hear you, we're acknowledging you, but understand that we don't agree with your, your assessment of, of on-grade level. If you look at the additional resources, it's very clear what services are close to the kids and what's not. For example, the communications director, is that person directly connected to the kids? No. Indirectly, this person communicates with the building principal. Indirectly, this person is showcasing what our kids are doing. Indirectly, this person is actually telling the narrative of the great and wonderful things we do in our district. Indirectly, through communication and through that collaboration, this person is actually getting out that message around the needs of our kids. If you look at the ELL teachers, that person is actually correctly, directly connected to the kids. Paraprofessional, same here. The grant writer, that person isn't necessarily connected to the kids, but certainly that person indirectly is actually writing grants and opportunities and securing resources that can affect the teaching and learning process. I can go on and on and on, but understand that there are some benefits for people who are not necessarily connected to kids, but indirectly certainly working to support the teaching and learning of our students.
I understand that. As you say, we disagree, and it's unfortunate, we don't have the money. So, at the bottom of this page, page fourteen is 700,000 dollars worth of spending over 21 people, full-time equivalents. The next page adds, and we have a total of 25 heads. And if my math was right, and sometimes you never know, there's roughly 35,000 dollars worth of benefits that go with a full-time equivalent. Something close to that. I'm looking at Mr. Donovan. Am I close to that?
Yes.
In other words, that the city, this comes out of the city budget. And I remember last year, when we made the proposal, I happened to be, I went to that meeting at, at the Aldermanic Chamber. And I think what, I think what killed the deal was when the alderman realized there was, at that time, it was about 550,000 dollars. Our increased head count, our 15 heads, was going to put on the burden of the, of the city, that they didn't have that five, a half a million dollars. So, in addition to this 700,000 plus for these additional resources, these 21 or 25 people, whichever number you want, 25.1, which is what's on page seventeen, there's an additional cost to the city, not in our budget, but out of the city budget, which is close to about 775,000 dollars. That's, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars at that point. It's 800,000? It's 875, thank you. So, we need to be mindful of that, because that's what killed us last year, in my opinion, recalling what the alderman had commented. And then I'll just, the page, the alderman, sorry, the Mayor Donches's memo to the district says that, and he highlights each department, and he talks about the school district, and he says not more than 2.25% increase over the current budget. And if I understand your proposal, you're suggesting 292. So, and that's, that 700,000 dollars comes back again. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Is there anyone else who, Ms. Hoensie?
I guess it's a rhetorical question, because I don't really expect an answer. But looking what Mr. Kaufman said, between the benefits that we would be adding with these 25 employees that we would add, plus the fact that we're 731,000 over, that's like one and a half million. What, if we have to, has any thought been to what we can cut? Or is that something we're not going to think about until we go through the first pass?
That's actually a very good question. Part of what's plagued this district over a number of years is that we start with the process of cutting. And as a result of that, we've had a number of transitions of teachers coming and going. We've had a number of transition at the leadership level, including at central office, and there's been a significant amount of unrest. And so, part of where this is going, and I'll take full responsibility for this, I have no intentions on cutting to get by. As superintendent of the schools, my job is to advocate for the kids of Nashua. We need this money. And I'm not going to sit here and lie to you or lie to the public and say, we can get by with 2.1 or 2.2. If the city decides not to give it to us, that's okay. That's, that's their prerogative. But don't say we need better schools. There is, we've cut to the bone in this district for so long, there's nothing else to cut. You don't want to support this middle school program? That's fine. But please don't come to me and say, we have behavioral issues. We need to do something. I'm trying to do something right now. Dan Donovan's trying to do something. These teachers are trying to do something. We are responding to our need. Our, we need to build and support these schools. And this school district has been on a diet too long. It needs to be fed. We need to start gaining some weight, and we need to start advocating for our kids. Our kids should not be in any way compromised, and they have been over the last five years. So, this is our time to say no. We are going to City Hall with a budget that we need. And that's not directed to you, Ms. Hoensie, please.
I know.
But I'm tired of cutting. We need to get fed.
Right. No, I understand, and I'm looking at, it's actually 1.6 million. We need to add the benefits and the overage, and this is an election year, so I'm just looking at, this is a tough sell. I just, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just trying to figure out how it's going to fall out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoensie. I would like to, before I get to you, Mrs. Oden, you'll be next. I just want to thank Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley. They put a lot of hard work and a lot of time and thought in this budget. And I, I just want to, I'm going to say something real quick. It was a very impassioned argument by Dr. Mosley. I think it was a very good argument, very impassioned argument, and well-thought-out. And I, I see a lot of good things in these priorities. The increase in the ELL, we've been talking about that. The increase in the special ed to reduce the out-of-district, it's a good strategy. It's a proactive strategy. And the increase in the social workers and the counseling, we need it. We need these things. And, and to try to reduce the out-of-district, I think these are good strategies. And I, I heard from a student personally, I have a letter right here, but I'm not going to name the student, I'm going to keep that confidential, but this student wrote me a long letter about the need for mental health services in our district. And she, she makes a wonderful, impassioned argument about the need in this district for herself and her peers. I'm, I'm just going to read one paragraph. It says, "I am writing you hoping that there is something you can do to help students at school going through these issues." She's talking about mental health issues. "I have some ideas on how this issue could, could be addressed. I feel that if teachers were better educated on some of these issues, it would make it easier to make accommodations for the students. I think that it would be beneficial to have an anxiety and stress management support group after school every week. This way, students could talk to other students that have been through similar issues as they're going through now. It would be a safe environment where students who have had similar experience could give advice and tell their stories on how they got through these tough times. I was also thinking that if a guidance counselor were present at these meetings, it could benefit the students to hear their opinion as well. And I hope we have, I hope this board listens to that student. It's a high school student, and we accommodate that in our budget." And it looks like Dr. Mosley is trying to make room in the budget for that already. But I just wanted the board to hear that from, from one of our students. Mrs. Oden, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I've sat on this board for, I think this is my fifth budget at this point. I had four back in the early nineties. And I look at what the mayor asked for, 2.25. I think if we got 5.25, we still wouldn't be able to meet all of our needs, that we really have as needs. I think back to Mr. Burns' presentation at the NIESC. Ten years ago, we had a certain number of ELL students. I don't remember the number, but we have more than twice the number of ELL students at Nashua High North than we had 10 years ago, and we have a quarter less position. That, that's disgraceful. And if I can get the information, I would like that information. I think it would be helpful for what we had at South and for the middle school. I look at, and I compliment Dr. Mosley for his position, and I thank Mr. Donovan for his work. But I look at this, and I have heard so many teachers talk about the need for paraprofessional support in classrooms. And we have paraeducators for kindergarten, which we were told it was cost-neutral. It really wasn't, because It really wasn't, because we didn't have enough paras for the first year. But, we also need more classroom paras from all of the teachers I've heard. So, I, I think, looking at this, it's a start. We cannot keep saying, "We have to cut, we have to cut." We have to let people know what we need, and that's why I supported the budget last year. I know, I went down to City Hall, that we had two board members that spoke against our budget. I believe we have to put out what we really need to educate our kids, or we are cheating them, and we can't continue this, because it's hurting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. I'm going to circle around to, uh, Mr. Mosher and Ms. Van Twyver, then I will get to you, Ms. Hoensie, I promise. Mr. Mosher, did you have anything to add?
Yes, I wanted to say how much I agree with Dr. Mosley, and how we have to, uh, service these, and we have to educate the kids, and you can't, pull up and add, something of an analogy, by saying that, uh, if you're going to have, uh, fifty people over for a Thanksgiving dinner, you can't do it with a, a dollar three eighty turkey. And, uh, we have to, uh, you know, let people know, let the, uh, the city know that, uh, this is what we need, this is what we have to have. And it's more than just pencils and a few pieces of paper. We need the programs, we need the, the things to service these kids and to help them, uh, help them learn. And if we're not doing it, we're not doing our job. Thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mosher. And, um, now I'm going to go to, I'm going to, uh, see if Ms. Van Twyver can hear us.
I can.
Ms. V, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, I can.
Okay, would you, do you have any more comments to add or questions?
Yes, I do, I have a lot of question, uh...
You, you have some feedback from your, from your house, ma'am?
Not questions, but I have to remind this board that, once we get a budget, that it's, um, it's imperative that we see that we don't do things that contradict what our budget does. Giving the teacher, I hate to bring up bad moments, but $250,000 to give teachers an extra day off during the, uh, the last, last year, was not a good, uh, and not getting anything for it, was not a good use of our money. So, it goes both ways, that we could stand more money from the city, but we could also better use the money, uh, that we do have, and to be conscientious of what we're doing, uh, so that we don't, uh, throw, in my estimation, it was a throwaway money. The other thing that I think we need to think about is that, are we getting what we're, money is paying for? Are we getting any results from all this? And as far as the, uh, tests from the SAS, uh, every year, it's going, those results are going down, 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 and it doesn't seem that the money is giving us what we want. So, I think that we need to very conscientiously look at how this money is being spent and how much, uh, benefit we're getting from it, that we're getting some kind of increase. I don't care if it's even just a 1% in, in improvement, uh, that's better. Um, but like I say, when I get my book, I'll study this more, and, uh, anything that we can do, I, I don't care how much money you spend on education, as long as it's well set, and we're getting, uh, improvements, that our graduating students who can read and write at grade level, and who want to maybe go on to college, or want to go into the, uh, uh, trades or whatever, um, that we're doing them a good service. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms., Ms. Van Twyver. Uh, Ms. Hoensie was next.
Thank you. I want to compliment the superintendent for, you know, some of the changes he made this year's budget from last, like the interns, I mean, they're very cost-effective. But I'm afraid that it, when we go through the cycle, we're going to be like rushed to make cuts, and they, if that's not advised, I mean, in terms of what we need, then is there a way to look at maybe out-of-district placement and maybe bring a few students back, maybe in, in part of Brentwood or somewhere, and, you know, hire a teacher or a couple of teachers or some, is there a way to you, to switch around our out-of-district budget to bring some students into the district and save some money instead of just a massive striking cut of the additions that you put out here? And I know you don't have an answer now, but I'm just trying to think, is there a way to look for alternative ways to economize if we're told that we have a lower limit? That's all.
Well, my only response is thank you, um, for that feedback. And again, even with the Brentwood program, we're leasing that building, so we're still paying for it out of district. Ultimately, we need to think about, when I say investment, so we, like, for instance, if we own the building, then we're not paying that, that yearly lease. So, um, you, you know, and also in terms of placement, it's really about, um, services and what the student needs. And sometimes kids don't qualify for Brentwood, but they also might qualify for another program that offers a little bit more comprehensive supports compared to Brentwood, and that's nothing against Brentwood. So, part of it is really, how do we develop as a district, kind of what I say, a buffet of, of programs and supports for our kids in-house, so that they don't, you know, so that we can start to recuperate in what I say, investments that, um, that we can benefit. For example, if we had a program here for kids, some of our kids that go to White House, I think there's maybe thirty or so kids, even if we were able to get thirty, those thirty kids back, not only would, it would be probably cost-neutral in terms of, you know, programming and tuition, but we're also paying for transportation. So, that little bit of cost for transportation would go a long way for us. So, there's, it's not the, it's those little savings that add up to the big ones.
Right.
Okay, um, Mr. Kaufman?
Maybe to pick up on where Ms. Hoensie was going, I guess, I see, having visited Brentwood last year and this year, and speak, spoken to some of the folks there, they are a, a huge potential. They fulfill an important need now, but they have capacity to do more. Now, I'm not saying we want, we, those, the right kids have to be in the right program, don't get me wrong, but is there a way, and I, I kind of challenged Mr. Donovan on this previously, is there a way that we, based upon the capacity we have, I think was at one time maybe five, six more, in other words, we can accommodate perhaps a half a dozen more students, can, sort of what Dr. Mosley was saying, the collaborative idea, can we reach out to other districts who have Brentwood need-type students and have them place in our, placed in our Brentwood program? And if we need to make a modest part-time to full-time investment in the staff, I would absolutely, I'd jump on that tomorrow, no questions asked. So, that's an immediate. So, that, the previous, the real Brentwood building in Merrimack, when it, that's what it was named from, that building, when Suresk managed that at-risk student-type building had sixty students in it, and the districts were paying $60,000 apiece to place them. Now, I'm not saying that you'd still get 60,000, but if you could pick up a half a dozen students at 25,000, every dollar helps, right? And we have the capacity, we have the space, we have the staff, and they're very effective over there. So, can we accelerate that? The other part of that is, I mean, I, you know, it's the chicken and the egg, which comes first, the strategic plan or the budget, right? Ideally, you have a strategic plan that says, "We want to do this over a period of time," and then you implement, implement a budget to make that happen. But what we're doing here, it's kind of backwards. We're saying that we, we need to make these budgetary adjustments, and we don't have any plan to support it. So, asking for money is one thing, having a plan on how to spend that money is quite different. And I would like to see this notion of, um, the district as a destination for out-of-placement for other places and a destination for ourselves. I think it's a great idea, but that, to me, should be a strategic plan issue that should be addressed in whatever strategic plan we see, because six million dollars are at stake, and that's, that's a big chunk of money to us.
Well, we have a strategic planning process, and we were all invited to input that. So, the time for that, uh, statement was, you know, a couple of months ago, while we were developing the strategic plan, I just want to mention that. The other thing is, you know, we have a budget, we have a budget cycle that happens every year. So, the strategic plan and our budget cycle are actually two separate things, and, you know, it's hard to try to sync them together, but, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, in a perfect world, we don't live in a perfect world, but, um, that, that's, that's the way things happen. Mrs. Oden?
I would just like to say something, I hope Dr. Mosley doesn't mind, but when we were interviewing Dr. Mosley, he made the comment, he said, "You don't have a strategic plan." He said, "Your strategic plan should drive your budget." And he made that real clear, and I think that has been one of his focuses, to keep, get a strategic plan for here. And I know he's tried to involve as many groups as possible, they've spent a lot of time. Ms. Porter's been involved, and, uh, I believe that future budgets will be driven by the strategic plan that Dr. Mosley, uh, brings to, uh, to us to, for approval. So, he has, he was the person who said, "You need to have a strategic plan here in Nashua, because that is what will, what, what drives your budget." So, he's, he's well aware of that, I know that. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Porter?
I have a couple of thoughts here, not in any particular order, but I think that, you know, we don't have all of the data, um, we haven't looked at it yet, it's not been organized, but from what we know so far, some of the issues that are coming up from the focus groups are represented in here, so they could feed into the strategic plan. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves, because that strategic plan is from focus groups up, and we want to be sure to let that process play out. One of the things I'm thinking, as we're, um, presenting to the aldermen, is maybe we could think about organizing this data in a different way. So, I understand from a budget perspective, putting it this way, but maybe we could scoop together, um, the costs. I, I know that the aldermen, having, being on the, uh, JSSBC, they think a lot about long-range planning. And, um, so if we're looking at that out-of-district placement, and we could say, "We have a long-term plan to kind of attack, you know, to, to address that, and these budget items are going toward that," that might be a good sell, to say, "The reason we're doing this is because we do have a long-term plan, for that money, we're trying to bring it under control." The other thing is too, is once we get closer to the, um, strategic plan coming together, a lot of these items could be presented under the umbrella of the strategic plan. So, instead of just being like a list of things, we could say, "These items support our strategic plan. These items support us addressing the out-of-district placements." It might be, um, because we here talk about this a lot, but the aldermen don't, and that's, that's fine. But if you're asking for additional money, maybe presenting it in a different way might go a long way.
Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
I think that's a very good point, Sue, and you just, I, I'm catching what you're throwing, so to speak. And I'll just hit it back to you, I think it ties into what Mr. Kaufman was saying. Let's just say we address the out-of-district costs, and for all intents and purposes, in two years, we were able to make some adjustments to the out-of-district, uh, costs at $5 million. I'm just throwing that out there. That money that we have been able to, um, save would allow us to focus on initiatives on that strategic plan. And so, if we don't get a, a handle on the out-of-district costs, that's always going to limit us in terms of what we can do for the strategic plan, because there won't be enough money to do so. That's kind of what I'm, I'll hit it back. Do you see what I'm saying with that?
Yeah, I do. And, and, you know, as far as like a strategic plan goal, I wouldn't say that in the focus groups, people are saying, "Oh, you know, it's the out-of-district placements that," you know, I don't think people are saying that specifically, but, you know, you're right, once we can get those costs under control, it allows us to focus on the issues that are coming up from those groups.
Mm-hmm. So, go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Ms. Porter, the, the thing is this, the focus groups, they're focused on their, their little world, okay? They're worried about what's going on in the classroom, they're worried about CTE programs and stuff. It's the board who looks at 109 million dollars. And it's the board that really understands this 5.6 million dollars of out-ofplacement. We feel that. Mr. Donovan, if you, having attended two years of finance, and I guess we'll be together for the third year, every meeting, get that, it's almost the last line item that he talks about every night, is, and it's always my question, where are we on that number? Because it, it's, uh, it, it, it just wipes everything else out. It's an overpowering number, and like Mr. Mosher said, we have no control over it, we're obligated by law to, to provide those services. So, I'm just trying to say, the focus groups are great, but they're in the weeds, because that's where they are. And there's no disrespect intended to that, but we're at the 30,000-foot level, we see the whole budget, and we see that one line item just dominates everything we do. And that and transportation, those two things are about 14% of the operating budget. So, and 80% are salaries, and we're playing with 6% for everything else. So, but, the teachers may not know that, the paras may not know that when they're in a focus group. We have the benefit of having, you know, pick Mr. Donovan's brain and everybody else when they come to these meetings. So, I'm just saying, I don't, you know, that's why we're here, is we're here to look at the whole picture. I don't know that the staff has the opportunity, I know, sure, a lot of them might watch it, but I don't know many people in their right mind would go through a budget like this and really try to understand unless you're on the board.
And, and I think that's why the board was invited to be, uh, part of the strategic plan and to have their input in it. Go ahead, Ms. Porter.
So, I, so I do understand that. Um, I don't think that that in any way minimizes anything that anybody brings up at a strategic plan. As the board, it's our responsibility to listen to everyone and to take their suggestions very seriously, and to figure out how we can present what we need to get to as close to what we need as we can. So, the out-of-district placements are important, those are our kids. Anybody representing any group in a, in a focus group, those are our kids. So, I, I understand that it's a different, it's a difficult job, we're overlooking all of it, but we can't pay attention, we, we have to pay attention to any, everything and figure out in this group how, how we get it to work the best we can. And, and, you know, after going through all this, you know, to listen to focus groups, we, we, we have to listen, we have to take that into consideration. I understand, it's a tough job. And, you know what? We'll figure it out. We will. We'll figure it out, uh, we'll work with the aldermen, and we'll do the best we can for all of the kids.
Ms. Raymond?
Uh, thank you. I have a question that's changing gears, um, and it's the deferred maintenance costs. And I, it just struck me that I don't know where in this, that those deferred maintenance, and I remember Sean Smith, at every meeting I've ever had with Sean Smith, indicating that he never has enough money to do the minimum required in deferred maintenance. Is there a change in the budget this year? Because last year, it was like ridiculously low.
The deferred maintenance is not in this part of the budget. The deferred maintenance will, will receive a sum when the mayor gives a budget. So, that's another item that comes from the city.
Okay.
Okay, so Monday night, Sean and I were meeting with the Capital Improvement Committee at the district. We laid out all our capital improvement plans, we had shared that with the board a couple of months ago. And so, we laid it out, they'll put together recommendations, and then when we get a little further on in the city budget, they will give us a number, and I would suggest that it's not going to be what we asked for.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So we have been almost two hours, and if there, if anyone has any more questions or thoughts, okay. Our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, February 6th, at 6:30 right here. And on the agenda would be special ed, education, ELL. I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. On the motion to adjourn, Mrs. Oden? Mrs. Oden, do you adjourn?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 8:24 PM.